Okay, I will open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is seven oh three P M. All members of the board are here for President Town Hall. Please note this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of the public, members of the board, and applicants can participate here in Town Hall or through the Zoom link virtually. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Bill, let's turn to item two. And let's continue the hearing for fourteen sixteen Hillside Streets. And as I recall, my instructions to you last meeting was just to provide a staff report, but basically a draft decision and the board could review that to understand very clearly what they're voting on. I saw that you did provide that to the board. Besides that, do you have any other updates for this?
There are, there was a couple of comments that the board sent individually. I think you were seen seated on. Some and Justin's here tonight with a revised plan. You each have, well, not the smallest one, it's the big one on there. And he can go review it. We will pull it up on the screen here. You can walk through the changes. What the board had asked for last time again was the review of the special permit criteria and the the O D special permit criteria, which I did touch base with the board to see what they thought. And if they had anything to put. The conditions. The most significant condition. That because wherever you change the conservation agent is Julia's going to be G I S full time. And so I asked her to go through this and make sure there's, you know, because this is still has to go through conservation commission approval and and Justin can explain that to you. But the potential for a change by, if this board chose to approve this plan, there's the potential for a change based on Conservation Commission input. And more than likely, it would be a change with like a rain gutter or something like that or something. So I I put that in as a as a draft condition that that anything happens, subject Conservation Commission approval and that changes could then be brought to the planning board at a regular meeting. And the board could determine if they're minor or major. They, I don't anticipate any changes by the Conservation Commission that would have anything to do with the use at all. It probably would be more with landings or something like that. So that was, that was what we have. That was probably the most complicated and dark side compliant lighting. Now, Bill, Cronshaw had sent a comment that was and I think, I think we might have been a misunderstanding with it, so, but Justin's gonna address that one, two, when he talks about his plan. So with that, I will be happy to run the the computer and ask Justin to come up and take this presentation.
Sounds great. And Justin, could you, again, just identify yourself with the record, please?
Yeah, Justin Shawski with fourteen sixteen Hillside Street. This is the updated plan, if you don't mind, I was gonna pop over here so I could point to something.
And Bill, if you could also just point to those on the screen as well for the recording.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Generally speaking, the plan has remained intact from what was shown last week. Just with some modifications of like the shape of the rain garden. There was questions about where the stair from the deck would come down, so I made sure, no, no problem. I made sure that that was very clear on this plan. There's some adjustments of the shape of the parking area, just to confirm and make it as the best as possible. Retaining and the harbor vibes for screening here. Bill, I think you had a question. I don't know. It said on the west side of the plan, which was, is that here? Was it just not legible, maybe? Are bodies for screening?
No. Let's talk about the old.
Here?
The old parking spot.
Okay, yeah. So as of right now, we've left that with with paving and we could add a screening element here to improve, to improve the pedestrian experience.
No, I'm not talking screening. I'm talking planting like you have on the face, so
Okay.
that area is no longer marketable.
Yeah, as of right now, we've left it in place.
So you're talking about this area, Bill? And putting a new connecting act?
Correct, because since me without it, then this project has six parking spaces, which is a whole different set of rules.
First, do you understand what Bill?
Yeah, just returning this existing spot into a whole planting area.
Yeah, not the whole thing. I mean, just, you got something on the front that's probably like four feet.
This here, just continuing.
Or wrap it around, whatever.
And the point is, is that looking at the zoning bylaws, it says how to improve the pedestrian experience. And Bill Cronshaw is one member saying this is one way that that can meet that criteria.
Yeah, certainly, if that's, you know, a condition of approval, something that we can make happen.
Maybe like addition of a row of our writing there.
No, I think you have hydrangeas in the front.
Yeah, we have proposed hydrangeas on the, just continuing the.
That would be to be people from parking there.
That would be to improve the pedestrian experience.
Yeah, and also to make sure there's not six, five. I stated as five.
Are you men? Yes. Yes.
I I'm just headed home. My last weekend as your planner, so I just wanted to say thank you. And I'm just moving across to water department, so you're not getting rid of me. Not going too far, but it was really nice to work with all of you over the past three years, so thank you guys.
What else is? Are there any other modifications that we should, that we need to enter?
No other modifications. The snow storage zones will be in here and in here and that, you know, as we work through conservation, you know, the adjustment and allotment of that required for the plan would probably be some of the minor changes that we'll make once we get, you know, further along with them. Other than that, that's the majority of it. So again, we still have the waste bin storage down here, the egress from the decks. And then the five spots. As mentioned.
Thank you. This, I, to my point of view, this addresses what I can recall is the requested items from last time. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the board?
May I ask a question?
It's all right. I'm looking at the
We'll give you a minute.
No, I mean, I think presumably the rain garden design is, yeah, like you said, gonna change based on further input based on what they've established with conservation.
Will be built.
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure, Justin, this is going to be supposed to be crushed rock, right?
Yeah, it'll be some kind of crushed rock or
It'll still be pervious.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And again, that'll be, you know, materials might be something that conservation wants to wait on.
But the idea is to maintain the pervious surface. So that's, that's helping with the runoff to the river as well.
I feel like this plan, you know, I think that the stacks parking is fine. Presumably you'll have two units with two parking spots each. They figure it out. So that's great. It takes a lot of the stress off of the streets. And then there is direct access to the upper units from the back, so that seems to be kind of the best of both worlds in terms of access.
Bill, is there anything else to add?
No.
I will open up for public comments. Bill, would you mind checking online to see?
Yeah, we do.
There's any public comments online. So for those members going online, if you'd like to venture a public comment, please either use the raise hand feature or turn on your video and raise your hand and we will call on you individually. Are there any public comments here in the room tonight? Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
You and President twelve Hillside Street.
Thank you, yes.
First of all, I was real disappointed that this is the first time I'm seeing, seeing this, so I had a chance to even think about, I mean, it's changed or whatever, so I don't even have a copy to send to other people or note in the community who are interested in this, so I don't know if it's ever gonna be posted on the site, so that was a little bit. Two things I want to mention, that six spot, you're talking about putting some kind of trees or plants or something like that. Again, it's not a final thing, but I'm right next to that. And when I open the door, I park right up against the building and I try and open the door. But that door, you know, takes out, there's all kinds of bushes and everything. I'm not gonna be able to get out of the car and have enough space even for, you know, without crutches to walk. And plus, if that's the the egress for the people in the lower apartment, they're gonna have to be squeezing between my car and whatever bushes are there. And so I'm just, I mean, it's not clear from from this diagram how that's gonna, you know, actually happen. So that's a concern that I would have. The other thing, and this is an ongoing thing, we're talking about those five spots and whatever. There's nothing stopping, the only thing, time they have to park there is on winter nights, few hours every night, which is like, like ten percent of the total year. The rest of the time, most people and I think five cars for nine bedrooms is underestimating what the working traffic's gonna be. It's gonna put a whole lot more cars on the street taking up, you know, public, public spots. And that's gonna be a definite negative, you know, for the community. And I don't see what this project is adding to the community. And all it's doing is gonna change the character of our, our street. And for the, for the negative. And I don't understand why a, a commercial project should come in there and start, you know, changing the, the, the character and then, you know, the lives of the people who live in town. So I just don't even know why this is even going through, but you guys can do what you're gonna do.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comments here in the room? Can you check online, Bill, if there's public comments?
Anybody online wants to comment? New? No. No comments online.
All right, any other information on the record before we close? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm in favor to close the hearing, please raise your hand. It's four zero and you're not allowed to vote on this one, just for the record, right?
Correct.
Right, so we're not four zero to close the hearing. So, Bill, the the request here is an application that is consistent with the protective zoning bylaws on nine point four, nine and ten point four. Correct, for a special permit.
For a special permit, yeah, the downtown overlay district is nine point four and the regular special permit is for nine point four six. I'm sorry, ten point four. And so this is a, the request is a special permit. The I think that's it. The board wants to go through the criteria.
Does anyone want to walk through the criteria?
Yeah.
Would you mind bringing it up?
Um, this is the standard special permit criteria and the intent is to have the board take into consideration not necessarily finding that all exists, but consider the criteria here. And in this you let me to read the drafts of it? Or I'll do it to do this.
Do you have a draft for each one of these?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, good.
All right.
Or is it shown on the screen?
No, no. I can.
Oh, good, you can read it.
Okay. Social, economic or community served by puzzle, the project revitalizes existing property, increases the town's housing inventory. Improved physical condition will provide economic and social viability of the site in the downtown area. So the board can change everyone over soon. Go ahead. Yes, okay, traffic flow safety, the project area ingress egress utilizes the ingress egress from the existing structure, the applicant is proposing five new onsite parking spaces as detailed in Exhibit A, which is the beginning of each zone. Adequacy of utilities and public services. Project is currently served by town utilities. Neighborhood character and social structure, the downtown overlay district location consists of residential uses. Knowing compatibility with the neighborhood characters expected from the use. Impacts on natural environment, the location is an existing structure with associated improvements. The applicant is adding parking spaces and creating new impervious surfaces. As partial mitigation, the applicant is adding a rain garden between the new impervious surface created and the river. Potential fiscal impacts on town services, tax base and employment. The proposed use will positively affect the tax base by generating revenue from an additional residential unit and aesthetic improvements from the exterior remodeling, which will improve the overall appearance of the area. And then
You wanna go to nine point four? The O D special permit?
Yeah. And
Okay, I'll just go through these quickly. The proposed, the proposal was a high development with construction materials, architectural design and enhanced site features. The second, it went applicable. Will provide effective protection of the asset that river from runoff from the pervious surfaces. Three, the proposed development will improve function of the downtown by at least, at least one of the following. Improvement of parking spaces. The effectiveness of allocation of parking spaces. Improvement of the pedestrian experience. Improvement of water quality, improvement of the function of the downtown area. And then proposed development is designed in a manner that is compatible with the existing natural features of sight.
Yeah.
And that's that.
That's that.
Okay, so those are the four. And your staff report or your draft decision covered these bill, correct?
It has, yeah, I had, I solicited the board for comments. I did get some in there. I could go through them if you like. Okay, for a significant uses of public to downtown, I didn't, I didn't, just see how that would help the parties. There'd be the act applicant's proposed plan contains all parking on site. This reduces the likelihood of on-street parking. Significant improvement to the pedestrian experience and made it, I needed P B in what, playing what input, and that's, we bring up from Bill. For D, for significant improvement to water quality, the new landscaping feature rain garden in between the parking area and the river. Additionally, if there's a whatever, impervious surfaces put down, whatever walkways we put down is going to be a pervious surface. Increased views and access to the access to the asset at river, the proposed project improves access to the river for residents and preserves the view as currently enjoyed. Provides a significant housing functioning downtown, it's upgraded housing and it's a significant improvement for the downtown overlay district. And then designed in a manner that's compatible with existing natural features. Its existing structure aesthetically is in harmony with the surrounding area.
As what was discussed during the hearing, the, this particular property could by right have two units up to four bedrooms each, that we told has, as what we discussed, it could have eight bedroom units with the current parking condition as is, right?
Without coming to the board.
Without coming to the board entirely, so that's, to me, there's, there is a baseline there that was presented during the meeting itself. So comparing that, that baseline nine, nine bedrooms, eight to nine bedrooms, but having a significant improvement of on-site parking. I think demonstrates a benefit under section three here.
I also think that, you know, the proposed rain garden, no matter what it ends up looking like, it's, that's a huge improvement over the current site, you know, I mean, right now, there's plenty of impervious surfaces with nothing. Nothing other than lawn right in between them and the river.
Any?
Related to the rain guard, why did?
To what?
You were reading back about the rain garden, you described it as partial mitigation.
Yeah.
It's not full mitigation, I mean?
Well.
Seems like a net plus.
Maybe I missed, we'll see. Proposed plan creates a new landscape feature rain garden in between the parking area and river. Oh, I must have just said that partially, I guess, I must have misspelled.
I think it was in the first part.
Oh, maybe.
Number five, the regular special permit number five. That's partial mitigation, the applicant is adding a rain garden. I assume that that was like, I don't know, maybe conscombs.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, I got you. Yeah, it was just a
Okay, any questions or further comments from the board on this?
On the ten four criteria, under traffic and safety, I would include the elimination of the second driveway action citizen plus.
Don't you mean the little one on the other ten?
Yes.
Yeah.
On which one? But let's see the, let's see on the effective as well.
Yeah, you could list eliminating the single parking space.
Yeah, for which one though?
Ten four, safe traffic and traffic flow and safety.
And or dash, yeah, number two.
Number two.
Eliminate the
You're eliminating one curb cut essentially, right? I mean, it'll still be there, but I'm saying it won't be a parking spot.
What does, I think we should also be clear about a little more about what the board would like to see there. To, so we can you know, like what you're originally, so Justin's clear with it.
How about the updated landscaping is approved by the chair or its designation? Which will allow some flexibility.
Yeah.
Thanks.
What do you, what do you, do you think about that spot?
I just thought it was gonna wrap around the continual stuff on the front, just wrap around.
But not take the whole width.
No, it would take like five feet, it would be five out of there.
Yeah, I think if it just turns a couple of feet, foot or two, a couple of feet.
It has to be. Four or five people I do. People, whatever they're living, but, you know, it doesn't have to fill the whole nine feet.
Yeah.
So there would still be play, there would still be plenty of space for people to walk past.
Yeah, although I don't know why, because it's not access to the floor, but there's a retaining wall right there, you know. Door swing and stuff would be fine. I thought it'd be the exact same container, just.
So you're thinking like, like along here would be the plantings?
Yeah. Continuation of whatsoever in the front. Same width, same everything, same plantings.
But I mean, against like here, so.
Yeah, it's only in the upper place, yeah, not like a draw.
Right. The street level.
I typically like it when applicants make the proposal. Instead of us being, I, I, I get what you're saying, that's a practical solution, I don't know what the final you know, I don't know if there's a utility going into the house there or something else that may get back on, that's all. I don't know what I don't know.
So you'd like the applicant to bring this back or to bring it to the chairs?
The chair for approval.
Chair for approval, yes, so we could do that offline, yeah.
Yeah, with all these comments considered, of course. Unless you wanna go back to the full board.
No.
No, no.
Okay.
A lot of you don't call for redwood or something.
Yeah, I don't particularly need to see a lot there.
I'm, I'm gonna have it so that's my, for my designation, just thank you.
I never made.
I didn't say that. Okay, what other conditions do we have, Bill?
Well.
Five parking spots on site, is that a condition or is that?
Well, what we did was we were adopting the plan by reference, because this, so we would adopt the plan by reference and
The reference has five.
Right, yeah, and then we're gonna ask for revised Exhibit A from the US, where he'll and that will eventually be what's recorded.
So one condition is of the additional landscaping in the upper tiered parking spot. Upper tiered area.
Yes, that would be done before we record this, though. So, you know, we will, before we record the decision, I wanna have that recorded with the plan.
Okay, fine.
So
What conditions do we have?
Conditions, we have all of the, the rather length, the Conservation Commission one I gave you.
Yeah.
And then the other, the only other thing we have is that any lighting installed shall be dark sky compliant.
Okay. The two conditions, the the Conservation Commission review that we discussed. And the dark sky compliant light, if, if lights are needed. Close. That's it?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? I will make a motion that the application, which includes a multi-family dwelling of three units, is, and as presented at tonight's and previous hearings with the Um, to at tonight's and previous hearings with the current exhibit. Showed five parking spots that was presented tonight. It is consistent with. Uh, the downtown overly district section nine point four point six special permit criteria. And is consistent with the special permit criteria and section ten point four point two of the protective zone. Do I have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Oh, um. I have to add to that motion, um, and the two conditions as discussed.
Two or three? Are you putting in the one about the landscape?
I put the landscape plan, the revised landscape plan. The conservation.
Then I'm, so I'm adding to that motion is the three conditions as.
Three conditions and the dark sky compliance, okay, and can I get a second on that full motion?
Oh, we second. Thank you. Um, any further discussion? All in favor by roll call, please, Bill?
Yes.
This is for both?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Yes, that's four zero to approve the motion.
For three years, for three years.
For both special permits.
Okay.
Consistent with both special permits, three conditions discussed. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
I'll build, I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um. So we have, uh, Harold Bearden, who, I think. And if I. Hello, but is presenting a, um. I, I gave. I gave you the requests modifications he's making.
Hmm.
I can pull him up, there's, uh, um, he could explain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, oh, sorry, um, Bill, do we have to close that hearing? I know. You know, we did close there. Right?
I closed it, just in case, close it again.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing on. Fourteen sixteen one six three.
Well, second that, all in favor to close. Four zero to close.
So now, I'm going to.
So, Bill, you're already turning to item three?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, it's, it's a public, this is a public hearing, correct? Yes, this is a public, uh, this is a request for a modification of the existing site plan. Um. And the difference, uh, the differences are, um, Taylor, uh, Bearden. The, uh, app, if you go through them with you, you also have, I gave you, uh, a two-sided printout on your, um. On, on your, uh, packet there that has the existing condition and the exposed. Uh, condition, and there's also the cover layer now.
Um, Bill, let me just, I'll open up the hearing.
Yeah.
For twelve Bangkok, Bancroft Street, the site plan modification. And the app, the application is filed by Civic Development. Um, let's see it, open it up. Sorry, thanks.
Rerun what I just said.
Yeah.
Um, and what I would like to do, wh- when the board's ready, um. Uh, Taylor has a presentation to review the changes and I will give. Taylor, this capability to run this presentation.
Uh, Taylor, would you mind identifying yourself for the record, please, and do you have anyone else presenting with you today?
My name is Taylor Bearden, uh, partner at Civic Development, the proponent for twelve Bancroft Street. And on Zoom with me are John Devella of Civic, as well as Paul Kirchner of Stansky and McNary, our.
Thank you.
Bill, may I proceed to show my screen?
Yeah. I think I can make you co-host, right? Good, I'll tell.
Thank you.
Um, Taylor, for the board's understanding, could you also just remind the board when you first came to the planning board?
Uh, yes, I can, so thank you all for having me tonight, I know some of you, but it's been several years now. Since I've been before this board, so I'll give a very brief history, just for those of you who may not be as familiar. Uh, this. Defended site plan approval was granted in two thousand twenty. And, uh, by way of context, uh, Civic, through our designated de-manner Bancroft LLC. Was, uh, designated as developer for the redevelopment of the former Coolidge School. At twelve Bancroft Street from a competitive RFP process that was run in two thousand nineteen. So there's a couple of, uh, levers that have resulted in the amendment that we are requesting. The board will use tonight, and I want to cover those two items. The two questions. Relatively minimal, but consistently reduced to developing the intent of the site. By staying back certain proposed items that we had previously proposed. We do not add any additional items to the proposed plan. And, uh, the reasons that we, uh, have done that are two-fold. So the first, uh, is related to a capital source that is essential for the redevelopment of the historic building. Uh, this project, uh, is the beneficiary of what are called historic, uh, tax credits, and those are. Uh, granted to us in exchange for certain preservation restrictions on the historic nature of the building. Now, uh, the plan that was approved by this board in two thousand twenty. Had not yet been approved by the National Park Service, which is one of two governing bodies for the historic tax credit funding. So between the last approval date and now, we have received a conditional approval of our site plan and our proposed development project. Uh, and that conditional approval gives us insight into how National Park Service approves our cycling. So the first lever as to why we are requested change the speed approved by the board are. Uh, related to National Park Service recognizing that the. Uh, area in front of the property is essential for the historic form. And, uh, the addition of plantings, um, was not acceptable to the park service. So the second element, uh, that informs, uh, the changes that we're proposing. Uh, is related to the deal structure we had with the town in two thousand nineteen, when we first were designated. Uh, to purchase and redevelop the site. So at that time and through the competitive RFP process, uh, there was a strong emphasis on maintaining. And enhancing public accessibility to the Daisy Park. And so as part of that, there was a prioritized list. That we as future property owner were obligated to deliver to the town. To improve the overall park and site. And the biggest component of that was the addition of an eight-space public parking lot. In addition to some other, uh, items, including benches, trash receptacles, and pathway, et cetera. So, uh, that list was capped at a hundred thousand dollars, the value of the improvements that the developer was to provide back to the. Now. Fast forward to where we are today. Uh, and when this project was bid, it became clear to us that, uh, just the retaining wall and parking lot alone would exceed that cap. So again, in order to, uh, provide context to the board as to why we're requesting these changes, there's two drivers. The first is, uh, National Park Service requirements, and the second is an overall. A value engineering, uh, a reduction in cost of the site plan. And that resulted in a elimination of several elements, uh, which I'll show you on the plan. Now, I understand that, uh, this context I'm sharing with you is not, uh, is not the criteria by which you review the plan. I just wanted to be clear about why we are where we are. Now, recognizing the original intent of the RFP process, which informed our plan that was presented here. Uh, we have worked with the planning staff to support an application to the CPC. To actually bring back some of those elements that we're proposing, removing from our approval. So that brings us to the nature of our request tonight. Which is to essentially seek a bifurcated approval, one for the, what I'll call base scope. Which would represent, uh, the project that we are building. And two, the additional public enhancements which would be constructed by the town, but we are seeking approval for. On this plan. So with that, I will, uh, show you visually, if you follow my cursor here, uh, this is a markup of the. Plan as approved in two thousand twenty. So I'm gonna start with the red items, uh, which call out. Parts of the plan that were eliminated between the. Prop over the approved plan and our current proposal. So those are hardscaping that we have scaled back in service of, uh, managing the budget. Um, that includes. Uh, in the front of the site on Bancroft, uh, stub of sidewalk, which was removed because it's, uh, redundant with the public sidewalk. Um, it involves the, uh, on plan left, uh, a private. Concrete walkway, uh, which we removed because ultimately it's not necessary for site circulation. And three, uh, on plan north, the removal of the public sidewalk. Which was to be outboard of. Private events. The second element is highlighted in green, and those are the two areas where the National Park Service in particular. Uh, took issue with our addition of planting. So we have, uh, based on the conditional approval of National Park Service. Are, uh, we are allowed to only maintain existing plantings or rehabilitate. Uh, three, I've identified a yellow, two locations where there were not additions or deletions, but just minor changes. Uh, the concrete walkway bisecting the building and the parking lot. Uh, is, was changed from a ramp to a walkway, uh, based on some minor regrading and the addition of a curb. Um, the net effect is probably enhanced usability. Um, but no change to the overall circulation. And then on plan right, uh, we have proposed moving the. ADA parking space, which was in the upper right inward of that parking lot and moving it toward. Uh, the bottom right corner, which would increase the accessibility to the adjacent sidewalks. Um, so with that, I'm going to toggle to the next screen, which shows the new plan as proposed. And I just want to call out one thing here, which is that. Uh, in gray, we have proposed adding back in the concrete walkway. Outboard of the fence line that we are proposing to remove from the base field. And we have, uh, proposed adding that back in, uh, to this. Second bifurcated approval, which would then afford the town the right to construct that at a later date based on favorable CPC award. So I know I share a lot of information, uh, but that's what I have for context, and I, uh, turn it back to the chair for questions.
Bill, notes, if you have anything to add?
Uh, two questions. Um, Wayne had sent along a question on, um. ADA access on the connection from the new walkway to the, um. The public, um, parking lot. And I, we weren't sure if there's a grade change there, or if there's, or anything like that. So if you could address that, so we could ensure that it's going to be, uh, so that's clear when we go to, um.
Yes, so, uh, I did hear that question, thank you, um, Paul, if you're listening, you could go off mute and just. I'm promoting that my statement is correct. Uh, that the new walkway outboard of the fence line as proposed would be ADA accessible, as would be. Uh, this intersecting sidewalk between the public and private parking area.
Uh, yeah, uh. For the record, Paul Kirchner from Stansky and McNary. That is correct, uh, that, uh, walkway that's shown in gray would just be continuation of the walkway along the parking lot. So it will be, uh, ADA accessible. There will be no obvious change in grade.
No change in grade?
Yeah, I mean, naturally, there's, there is a slope of some sort, but it's, it's well within, uh, ADA, except for slope.
Thank you, Paul.
Um, and the second question I had. Was, um. Could you run through real quick? Um, and. Highlight any of the, the, just the, the, make sure we have the changes that are occurring on public property, which is, could you just point again?
Uh, can, can I add that too, just so the, for the board members that weren't initially involved in this, can you just? For the record, show what the private parking lot is and what the public parking lot is.
Uh, yes, so if you follow my cursor, for those of you who are looking on screen, uh, there is a. A sixteen-page, sixteen-space pub-private parking lot, which is, uh, outlined by my cursor right now. And that would be for residents of the building right here. And then to the right of this, uh, fence line and sidewalk. There is an eight-space public parking lot on public land that will be for users, well, any members of public, for that matter, but not for residents of the building. Now, to answer Bill's question specifically relative to, uh, the site amenities. So this plan shows the construction of the sidewalk. And this little landing area here, which provides a little overlook to the public park. Uh, it also calls for the construction of three benches. And in the planned notes, which would be available, uh, for engineering. Or available with engineering for whomever bid this project. Uh, there is also other public amenities that were included in the CPC app, including, uh. Uh, waste and recycling bins. Um, benches and. Uh. Getting my list right now, Bill.
Uh, benches, uh, I think that was, we have benches. Uh, waste, uh, bins and, um.
Right here, I'm zooming in for those of you who are looking at screen, so the, uh, additional. Scope is included in this optional furnishing, uh, note, so we have two bicycle racks contemplated, which based on discussion with town staff. All of these additional items that aren't on the plan would be placed at the discretion of staff or DPW where on the site. Because of course, we're only proposing, uh, this area that impacts our site, and so other kind of whatever called site furnishings. Would just be at the discretion or location of DPW. Um, furthermore, Bill, uh. Justin Amargo, director of DPW, has provided us the, uh, spec sheets. For, uh, what DPW would typically purchase, and so to the extent that this gets bid as a package, those spec sheets would be included. Because they would be standard, standard product that DPW would purchase anyway, in the case of a public park project.
And that's also the you'll provide.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, uh, Justin Amargo provided us.
I saw that.
The, the sheet, so to the extent that we need to package this. For you, we, we could separate out those spec sheets specifically for the benches, recycling, or the, the trash receptacle and the. Bicycle rack.
Um, and, well, I guess that was my other question, you, you do it. Specs, okay, that. Uh, just for the board's edification, um. We went through the. Proposed list of, of potential improvements with DPW and this our working group in the board. And a couple of items were eliminated, um. So, um. But, uh, we have applied for, um. Funding for the walkway, of course, the. Um. The benches and the, um. Waste baskets.
Bike racks?
Hmm?
Bike racks?
Did we, I think we did.
I think so.
Yeah, I think we did.
I have the list right here, it'll be helpful for me to just read it. So, uh, this is exhibit C in the board package, it's the CPC application for funding. Uh, exhibit B budgeted list of improvements, so it would include six ADA accessible. I'm sorry, a six-foot wide ADA accessible public concrete path, which is what's shown on screen. Uh, including the overlooked area, three metal benches, which are shown on plan in the overlooked area. Uh, four recycling bins, two bike racks. Including the concrete pad necessary for installation.
Okay. And they'll all be to our spec, so they all. Match.
But this, this site plan is also asking for approval of. One or two other things that may or may not happen some other way, right, like the sculpture.
Sculpture, yeah, I had, yeah, we're on the list, but.
So they were on the initial. Approval.
But.
But they're not gonna be on the CPC application, is that what you mean?
Because it, yeah, because they're eligible, right?
To be fair.
They could come from somewhere else.
Well, we're just, we're just.
Yeah.
Categorizing.
I know, part of me does wonder, I mean, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad we're doing this. But that list was meant to meet one hundred thousand dollars. We were not expecting that list to be. Entirely fulfilled necessarily anyway.
No. No, it's a wish list, and it was prioritized.
So this is just sort of tidying. So this is just sort of tidying it up based on the radically different costs of doing everything now.
Now, like the, for example, the waterproof cabinet. And, oh wait, no, this is public, okay, the. The, well, sculpture. It it the this CPC can do, but theoretically, I don't know, cultural council could come, maybe have a grant and.
Well, I think, I think having this whole, both the engineering drawings for the walkway.
Yeah.
Plus the list and specs, everything ready to go.
Yeah.
If CPC doesn't approve it. We have still a tidy setup for another grant and another, whatever we want to do, however we can.
That's correct.
Make it happen.
Um, let's pause for a second. Do you, are you guys following along? Do you want any clarity, you want any clarity right now? On this?
No, I think I'm following. To the chairs, I make a. Problem, of course. So something I realized I didn't say is this project is under construction and so. To the extent that anyone in the neighborhood or anything over there. Our our timing is such that. We've. We started construction recognizing we still need approval here. So I'm. I think I I just would like you to be aware of that. But something else I would mention is. If there are changes in the furnishing notes, for example, that need to get changed or conditioned. Those are easy for us to modify based on changes and how staff or the board would like to see. Those notes, because those notes are supplementary to the plan that needs to be.
This is optional on it.
But we're being asked to prove. Them now, so we don't have. Come back and approve it later, right?
Yeah, it was originally approved. They were originally approved, so they're not being modified. So we're asking be, we're asking to approve the modifications for the. The highlighted areas that that are shown.
Okay, so let's ignore the rest of the stuff and talk about just what their. What their new plan looks like.
Go back to the highlighted change.
To be clear and for the benefit of those on screen, the base plan here is the as approved plan, my markups. I correspond to elements that change on.
It bears me that on the north side. The location of the condensers is also being changed. It's being moved from a dedicated area to what was going to be a patio.
That's correct. That is correct. The condenser locations which I'll toggle to the new plan. The condenser locations have been distributed around the site. We have three primary locations. One, if you just follow my cursor on the north of plan. North again. And then south of plan. Whereas if I'm toggling back to the prior approval, they were concentrated on the north. Easterly side.
Mostly out of curiosity, why?
I don't remember that answer.
You don't have to have it.
I think.
It's not required, it's not required.
I think it's line sets probably, so basically the length of run between the outdoor condenser and the interior unit.
Are those, so that's basically one unit per unit?
Yes, I just got it. Sometimes they're ganged up, but not in this case.
What are revised plantings going to be or did they just eliminate?
Just eliminate, so basically in that front apron. Yeah, scratched were just grass and whatever trees are there. And that was important for the civic. Civic nature of the.
It has to be the grass in nineteen twenty.
Be our first ball.
How how many? So we had proposed trees being planted on the original approval?
Yes, so I can toggle to.
Yeah, so my question will be. What's the balance of trees that were lost from the original approval?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I would welcome. John has some background noise, but if John DeBella hears me and knows the answer. Should care about the balance of trees between our original proposal and current.
See, John. Yep, yep, I'm here. I believe it was. Three, I think the two in the front and then. The proposed tree at the rear of the site would be. Not included anymore.
I would like to condition that those trees get planted someplace else on the property, not. Not around, not on your property, but around the public property.
Park or on, okay.
We we try to main, we try to. We've always tried to maintain as many tree plantings as possible and since that was the original approval, those numbers, I'd like to keep that same number.
Would it be appropriate to? Draft the condition such that just like the benches, for example, those are at the discretion of DPW for the location, okay?
Yep, and it'll be some point in the future.
Yeah.
You know, we're not trying to have it done for your CO.
Okay.
We just, you know, if we have three trees that have been approved, we, I want to keep those.
Yeah.
And find a good spot for them. Right? Bill, correct?
Yeah, I'm 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 trying to think what was the simplest way to do that if we just have a. Because we don't know where, if we don't know where they're going to go, just someplace in the public park.
In or could it also be straight bench along the park?
Yeah, sure, could be. Somewhere along back up. But are we saying that the applicant would do it? It might be down the line. That's what I'm thinking. It might be, because these are going to be neutral, you're not relocating trees, I mean, they're going to be.
No trees, so these were new plantings that I just want planted.
Yeah.
Are there, do you?
We have a tree fund, I mean, we could get.
Are those, those are new trees that are going in that are staying in this plan that's on the screen and not the three that are in the front that can't go in?
So just to be clear and then help make sure I answer your question, but. So if you follow my cursor and we go from plan left on Bancroft Street, these trees are existing trees to remain.
Yes.
Uh, so in the approved plan. I now follow my cursor from here wrapping around the corner down with those are all the new trees.
Yep.
Um, and John just confirmed for me, are those. Five trees from where my cursor is around Elmwood, those are all to remain, right? I'm sorry. Uh, we are still proposing them, right, John?
Uh, yes, I believe that is the proposal.
Yeah, but the tree that we're talking about losing is is that back here at my cursor, John?
Yes, and then the two at the entrance.
And this, and this, so the two that flank the entry walkway and then over here on the back right. Are what we would not be proposing. So basically, everything that's adjacent to the building. And would affect the intersection of the building, the ground plane as it relates to National Park Service.
Yeah.
Now, when the park service approves it, do they come out and do a site inspection?
Chris.
You're going to be taking a hold the day after?
Yeah, well, if we condition it that they have to keep the landscape plan five years after CO, I mean, do they come back twice?
So. Five years after we chose planted trees, to be clear, sorry.
Um, so Bill, I don't know how to write that condition, but I.
Yeah.
The I want to keep the assets.
I mean, isn't it similar to green metal? It was just. We want to maintain a certain number of trees that was in the plan and put them somewhere on the site. No, that's no problem. The problem is when we're talking about going out on the public site.
Yeah.
And that that's because I don't want to, I don't want to also speak for DPW and say we're going to pop it here and then there's like, no.
No, we're not choosing locations. I'm fine on the public park or on one of the adjacent roadways.
Yeah, but is this going to be a financial donation equivalent to three?
Or we could do in finance.
Like to the tree fund?
To the tree fund and unless the tree committee figure it out, I'm fine with that.
Or specifically tag it as for.
I'm fine with that too. I just want to maintain the asset.
Yeah.
I don't want to lose the three.
I am, I agree. And that's, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
All those are options for me that I'm fine with.
What I didn't want to do is ask the, you know, if if they're going to do the work and we don't know when. DPW is going to do it, or, you know, I was trying to make community for you guys, so. I think the thing to do would be get a. A donation equal to three, if if you wanted to, three trees and we said, like we asked, we do with the others and say no net loss of of. A tree and have them met whatever. Height, you know, we have or whatever and just say, you know, that we could do it like that or we could say, you know, there's other places on the property. I'm just asking, like I said, just to go.
Yeah, do you want to check with DPW?
I I would prefer to check with DPW if it's going off. If we're if we're not going to do, if we're not going to do either donation or a cash donation to the tree fund. Or to the other.
Do you have any hesitancy around this discussion at all that you would like to like to tell us?
I'd like to make it, just to add something to the mix. So considering that we do have this bifurcated approval that we're seeking.
Yeah.
Relative to some things that would be done in the future anyway. Perhaps we could add to the optional notes. Three trees that are, I mean, we can look at the caliber of the trees that we had proposed originally. Three trees, list them out on that plan. So that it was abundantly clear and then perhaps the condition. I don't know, could have a time horizon, any number of things, but just tie it to the fact that we already have the supplementary part of the set. That has some definition for that approval.
It could work, that could work. Let's check with DPW, make sure we get it correct.
I'm with this standpoint. Would it just be quicker and we could. Essentially act quicker if we just. Said it was, you know, five hundred, a thousand dollars a tree and go in the fund. Is it we check with DPW, that's going to push us to.
Right.
Right.
Is um, is is our fund only a DoD fund, Bill?
Is it what? No, no, the tree fund is a tree fund, it's not our fund.
Okay, all right, this would go, if that's not limited to the DoD.
No, no, no.
Okay.
And can you tie it up to this thing? It should be on the. Foolish plate.
As much as possible.
Park, yes, as much as possible.
Or Elmwood or Bancroft.
Yeah, if we put it public park, I think that, yeah, Elmwood or Bancroft or.
Yeah, park, Elmwood.
The park and we put park or it would probably be fine. I think that's reasonable. And easy. Okay, or however, you know.
I don't want to bog down the discussion too much right now.
Right, right, right.
Good moment going, so.
I just have, you understand my head.
So those. You, Bill, country, you started with some questions about the outside. Air handler units.
Oh, yeah, that was the only one because it just struck me as a change that gets more green space.
Let's go to the board for any other questions or comments on the proposed modifications. I had a question, just more of a confirmation. Are you are you changing the general nature of the of either parking lot and my question is really about. The last stall in the parking lot and and if it's not a modification, then we don't need to discuss it. But the last stall looks like it's going to be difficult to turn in and turn out of, so the stall that's on. Plan north here, I think it's actually. Um, yes, so that parking spot and then on the public parking lot as well, the last stall on the top of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'll defer to Paul on any stunning movement implications, but I'll just, I want to show for the benefit of the public, so I'm just. Showing that the only material change is the movement of the public parking. In the upper right hand corner of the public parking lot, moving what was previously an ADA spot to. The front of the site, so Paul, can you respond to the chair's question, please?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of that, please? I know what you're talking about, the ADA spot.
Sure, I understand modification now, the current proposed condition on this public parking lot. Is that the last stall. Uh, that is currently being shown, it looks like it'll be difficult to get in and out of. Um, and that looks like a change of condition. And am I correct to think that this will be a difficult spot for turning?
Yeah, you're knocking over the benches.
Yeah, I haven't run an analysis on the turning motion out of that spot. It's something that we can look at.
Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I do, and so it it looks that. Basically, the previously because of the loading area associated with the van spacing, it. Created a de facto hammerhead and that has changed, so I think. We don't have the luxury of regrading or increasing the area here, so I guess if. Paul determines that, yes, in fact, what you're observing is likely to render this difficult to use. Then my suggestion would be that we just revert. To the prior plan for the position of the ADA space. I think there's a reasonable argument to make. That the ADA space is more usable on both ends, it just depends on whether you think that. Someone is more likely to benefit by being close to the overlook versus more likely to benefit by being close to the sidewalk. Um, so I think that's probably net neutral. Uh, so we can look at that and then.
Does the board have any opinion on that neutrality?
Well, maybe I missed, why was it moved?
Uh, it was moved because after looking at the plan again. We just inferred that it might be more usable if it was adjacent to the sidewalk, because that. Meant greater connectivity overall. Um, because when you're at the apex of the hill, if you're. If you have limited mobility. And you're at the apex of the hill and you park. In the corner here, it does give you immediate access to this pathway, but there's nowhere to go. Versus the sidewalk has other connectivity, so that was our thinking.
It's going to be such a spiffy new parking lot and only a mere however long it's going to be. I think that if it makes, you know, functionally. It is easier to turn around and burn all the cars.
Me leaving that, leaving it.
Leaving it in in the interior.
Based on this discussion, just for the benefit of here, I would be willing to agree now, not even to. Examine it further, I think your point is well taken and if if that's the way the board wanted to go, we could move it back. Without further study, because it's. The study will. Yeah, on on the on the sidewalk in the area to the left. If we were to move the handicap spot back to where it was, is there. Possibility of a handicap ramp there to get people to the. Overlook and benches area and things like that.
Yeah, it would have to be moved down because they relocated it.
Yeah, so.
Straight, so they'd have to move it back.
What do you say?
So in this.
Yeah, at the other end of the parking lot, right?
Right, the sidewalk to the overlook.
Oh, right, yeah.
Sorry, I need a little more explanation if I need to respond to that.
You you need to be able to get from the handicap parking space to the overlook via that sidewalk, so you need a ramp to get to them.
Oh, understood, so am I interpreting correctly that you're stating that we.
Put a rapid on your. Relocated one, now you've got to move the space and that ramp back.
Got it, so former ramp now needs to move. To plant north.
Yeah.
Because I think that was on the original.
Yeah.
Paul, do you hear that?
Yes, I do, and that's easily done.
We should tell the National Park Service to, you know. Broaden their ideas of. I mean, grassy, grassy lawns or whatever they refer to it as.
I have the lane just here.
It's like, I get it, but also, you know. Come on. Who doesn't have a choice? Well, then shave that. Anyway, I think it's fine, keep the trees, stick them somewhere else.
Can can we clarify how we're going to do the trees? I want me to do the trees.
Um, least path of resistance. Um, least path of resistance. Uh-huh, and I don't know what that is, so.
X dollars per tree to the fund for use on the park. Um, Bancroft or Elmwood Street.
Okay, is that is that just as easy for you?
How do we cost out a tree? Because tree, what the original proposal was obviously capital costs and then installation costs, right? So without, how do we cost that out now to have it equipped?
Do you know how much a tree costs?
Not up to my head, but the way we would do this, just to be clear, is we would go to our contractor and we would. Remove those from the plan and and get a credit associated with the removal of those trees and that will get our. But. I. I don't want to introduce yet another variable into this.
Can we make it a condition that you can talk to Justin and get a number from him and make it a condition?
Well, we've done this before, right?
Yes.
This was the free cost guy.
We 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 um, we 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 have the applicant propose. A a number, um, but we didn't talk about this ahead of time, so he wants to bear it. Um, but we usually have the applicant proposing number.
And it, I could get a number as soon as tomorrow, just to.
It would require a continuance for from tonight till next week or January.
Would there be um, a means of, uh, I've heard in the prior hearing that I think the board empowered you to make a. Decision or nominate a decision maker, could I come back with information to you or to nominate?
I don't know if we could for that, um, that was to approve a specific sort of landscaping, which isn't a big deal, but. Um, a monetary number, I don't know if the chair can. Can approve a monetary number. How can we do this?
Now it's come up with your numbers are comfortable.
We need, so let's do this, if you're willing. We don't have anything on the agenda next week and we could continue to next Tuesday. And we could hold a virtual meeting since it'd be the only item.
With the tree cost at that time?
And then we could discuss and close then, that's an option. I don't know, what, how, what is your schedule and what was your expectation?
So.
For this.
If. It would be in our best interest to conclude this as quickly as possible, but. Next week would be just fine if that would solve this particular issue and make all of us not have to guess.
Um, generally, I'm seeing that the board doesn't have. Um, much hesitancy for the proposed changes. So I hope that helps.
So. Let me ask another question of you, if we do the continuance. That would allow us to reflect any changes in those optional plan notes on the public park amenity plan as well.
Yeah, we could tie up a couple things, yeah.
Is there anything else? That we would, that you would seek for us to do before next week?
What's the advantage of removing the option of stuff?
On the plan, sorry, just to be clear about my suggestion, it wasn't removing, I was saying adding the trees. Oh, that they were all approved already.
I'm I'm not following that last piece.
He's saying, so since we're taking the three trees off of the plan.
Yes.
He's saying to put them in the list of optional things. I don't think we need to do that, I think if we're gonna do it as a, with a lot of other applicants, we've had this tree fund and it sort of puts it into the hands of. The tree committee and DPW to use their discretion, it's sort of like a built in mechanism just for trees, because that's all we have to work with on a lot on a lot of sites. Um, so I don't think you even need to add it to the optional list, in my opinion.
Okay, here's an idea, and I don't know, I don't know if this works or not, just just trying to figure out. You're gonna remove the three trees from the plant and subtract them from your. So you'll have the cost.
Correct.
So what if we said the three, the tree, the cost of three trees will be applied to the tree fund? Would that be?
Three trees.
So you're saying whatever his number comes back as.
Yeah, well, that we don't know what that number is.
What if, what if it's like sixty bucks?
No, that's a good point, yeah.
I just don't know how it was bid out, you know, I don't know how to live it up, so.
I just.
I think we.
I don't think it's gonna be sixty bucks, I'm just.
No, I know, yeah, all right, all right. Um.
Um, other, other comments, questions from board? Um, I had one other item, and and it's been, and this is the context of it. The the proposed initial plans have a pathway that went to the slide. Which no longer, the pathway no longer exists on, you know, the proposed pathway no longer exists. Do I have that correct?
Uh, yes, and I'll just show you visually so you can see the difference that we toggle between my two tabs here. Uh, if you see this location, that's where there's a ninety degree turn of the fence. So previously, it, the path, the pathway went to the slide. And now we're proposing the pathway stop at that ninety. So yes, you're correct.
Um, the slide is. Not a usable condition too, so my question is, would you as applicant be willing to remove and dispose of the slide for the town? Um, as part of the changes that would be made?
So, I think we would be willing to, um. I would just wanna be super clear on. What that would entail.
I agree, I also would want that to be clear, what that would entail. Um, because it's a public asset, um, but it's technically not an asset anymore since it's. Um, not usable.
For example.
Yes.
The. Uh, existing surface, I believe this is a stairway, perhaps?
That's correct, with a sort of asphaltic path at the top.
Yeah, so I, just to the extent that. We could define and keep the scope very minimal. That would be my preference, I I.
I I don't want to open up can worms either, I just want it to be. Removal of slide bring to. Some reasonable condition.
Yeah.
It'd have to be DPW would have to approve that though.
And I better tie you that up then for next week.
Yeah, okay.
So through the chair, to you, Bill, I. Am I correct in saying it's APC has indicated they would not. Include that in the application?
Yes, and I checked for legal.
Okay.
As well. Um, and we've, uh, I, because I made sure I chose, um. And um, we said something local CPC, you know, on that, our CPC is, did not feel that that was. Uh, adding enhanced, I think, an answer to the playground itself. And there's a same with those sculpture which make on the bookshelf, the book, uh, little library. Now, that doesn't mean that, like, for those others, like you said, for other stuff, but the slide, uh, no.
Uh, so Bill, if you could ask DPW, um, what that could entail? And we can discuss that on, at the continuance. And so I have trees as as a as a homework and the slide as a homework item.
Yeah, with trees, the trees, I, what would you like me to do on that?
Um, I'm fine understanding the proposed cost and then putting that to the tree fund.
Okay.
It's just that it has to be the proposed cost.
Okay, so you want to give me your proposal, so I'll jump a little bit.
So just to be clear about my instructions here, so uh, we are going to determine what is going to pass us.
Hmm.
And we are going to propose at next week's continuance. That as a condition of approval, we pay that. Before certain occupancy into the tree fund.
Yes.
And then the board will react.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I think that makes sense, and then I could check with this slide and make sure it's everything the way they want it.
Yep.
And we can do it, it'll be, next week will be virtual.
Um, I'll I will make the determination, but that's my intention.
But if it's on the slide, are we just talking about the slide structure going away and the. The footings being restored or whatever, but not the path.
The path can stay, I think the path is.
Not the problem.
Not the problem.
Okay, so it's just the.
The slide is a hazard.
Yeah, the hazard, the slide structure, make it go away and, you know, if you rip up a hole in the ground, you gotta fill the hole, right?
Uh, yes, that's the idea, so slide footers, removal disposal. And and the context here is that we initially, this proposal was to have a pathway that connected up to to up that infrastructure and now we're not. Any other, any other questions, board? Continue one week. Oh, sorry, I will open up for public comment, I'm terribly sorry, um, can you check if there are public comments online, Bill? For members online, um, if you cared to answer a public comment, please use the raise hand feature or Ray, come. Turn on your video and raise your hand and we'll call any one at a time, are there public comments in the room tonight?
Yeah, I do.
Um, so a few instructions, if you could just state your name and.
I just.
Yeah, Victoria Brown, I live right across the street from Coolidge at thirteen Bancroft. I was on both reuse committees for the uh, for the school, so I'm pretty familiar with it. I I have, you know, one of my main concerns is public access to the hill and from Bancroft, you you guys will will build that that sidewalk that will go through the top of the hill. But this, this, the the public walkway won't be built for some time now, evidently. I mean, you guys are gonna be way done before this CDC gets it together to build that 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 sidewalk, I assume, but maybe, who knows how long it'll be. So after you are done with the with the parking lot and the public access to the, to the hill, what's that gonna look like? Is it just gonna be, uh, you know, it's not gonna be like a sidewalk that ends and there's a foot drop off to the hill or will you guys make it so it's still. Usable for the public to to get to that hill, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so through the chair, uh, it will be, it will be graded, because we disturb a a side area greater than the work we're doing.
Yeah.
And so anyway, we have to return it to a usable condition and seed it. And so the the grading will will blend, I think is the best term I can I can give at the moment.
Right. Okay.
Um, so follow that, that boundary condition there, there's a, there's a fence essentially, right? Um, that wraps. It's adjacent to the the site parking lot and then behind the building.
I'm sharing my screen again, just so the public can see, I. Are you referring to this fence where my cursor is?
Yes, and then, but then the one that goes along the future potential walkway, so here, that's, so the boundary condition here is a fence.
Yep.
And then your proposal includes going from fence to grassed. Uh, sloped hillside, is that correct?
Correct, Paul, if you can hear me, is there anything you want to add to what I just said?
Uh, yeah, could you actually go to sheet three of the plan, said the one before this, because. It does show the um. That that sheet that was just on the screen is showing the optional town component of the project, whereas this uh. This sheet, sheet three shows what uh, uh, Civicco Development is looking to, um. To permit this evening, so there will be a fence along that property line, um, but. You can see the, uh, down the line if the town elects to. Uh, install that walkway, it will just be building off of what Civicco is building here, so there will be a walkway alongside of the. Uh, public parking lot, it will end at the end of that paved parking lot, but. The, it will be grass, it will be graded out in a manner extremely similar to how it would ultimately be graded out. Uh, when a a walkway is built in that area, so um, other than there being, you know, no. Uh, pavement there potentially for some time, um, in terms of the way that it is graded. It will be pretty much the same, um. As whenever that walkway is put there, so it'll be smooth and accessible, even though it's not, won't technically be handicap accessible because it won't be paved, but.
That's great. And I I also, it would be great if you guys could get rid of that slide, it's been, it has been a hazard, as you mentioned, for a long time. Really been an eyesore and something needs to be done.
Understood. Anything else to add, Victoria?
I don't think so, um, they're doing great, it's going great guns over there. It's an amazing, no, no, it's fine, we're we're happy to see it because it's been a long time coming, you know? And it looks great, they're very meticulous work, um, it's gonna be, the the building looks, it just farbels now, doesn't it?
Looks very good.
Yeah, it really does.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Bill, we have a comment online. Yeah, David Mara, okay, um, David Mara, I'll I'll recognize you.
Yeah, uh, we're part of uh, on School Street, just one concern on the, so there's on the fencing there, metal fencing. There's a lot of large trees that the the branches have broken off and they're uh, going across uh, property lines and all that. So one of my concerns was if we could take a look at some of those trees that are not stable anymore. Uh, so we won't have any damages to any other properties. Uh, because they have fallen in the last year or two, uh, big huge branches then, uh, of. Not exactly hitting the Kingdom Hall, but have come close to it, so that's one of the concerns that we, I would wanna bring up to the board.
Um, Mr. Mara, could you just clarify which trees you're referring to and specifically on which roadway are you referring to?
Uh, it's going in back of the School Street near the Kingdom Hall, Jehovah's Witness, uh, next to the uh, uh, of the fence there, there's a. Few big trees there that their branches have fallen, uh, and it seems like this tree is not stable, so if we're gonna be doing any groundwork on that. On that area near the ramp, uh, that might not make the uh. Ground there a little bit stable and maybe even make it worse to have the trees uh, do some more damage.
Um, are we referring to areas near the playground or near the current, uh, the current former school?
Uh, well, near the school, near the former school, right in the corner, uh, before the slide coming down, right next to the fence there. The, uh, that area there, there's some huge trees there that, uh, the branches have been falling and, uh. You know, they've been going through a property, so I know I've talked to the town before and they said they were gonna take a look at it. Because uh, it was, you know, if that thing, one of those things, one of those trees falls down. Um, it can do some damage and actually uh, ruin some properties.
Then, so some of those may may or may not be on town property, some of those may or may not be on the applicant's property, but the applicant has heard this comment and I'm sure will. Uh, evaluate any um, any trees on their own property.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I just responded that quickly, so we we have had a a tree trimming company, I think, do some preliminary trimming around. And at the end of construction, we'll we'll do a final pass on anything that looks dead or at risk. Recognizing that we're not authorized to give you the trees.
Thank you. Um, Bill, I'm not seeing any other comments online, correct?
No, the.
Okay. Um, I will make a motion to, sorry, I got to get my days correct. I'll make a motion to continue to December seventeenth at seven P M.
Are we gonna do it virtually or on?
It'll be virtually.
Ooh, big pronouncement.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the continuance, please raise your hand. Five zero for a continuance.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair, for coming in, thank you to your um, colleagues as well.
And just uh, for clarification, sending it to DPW right now, um. So we're gonna want to, you wanna know just how they're gonna want the slide.
Move the final condition.
The final condition they.
Get to give instruction so that there's a bunch of some clarity.
Okay.
Right, I want clarity, these guys would want clarity. Uncertainty for items like this is a killer.
Yeah, right.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm happy to talk if you can.
Thank you.
Um, okay, Bill.
We have um, minutes if you prefer.
We have one set of minutes. One set of minutes.
Yeah. We have, um. Thank you. I I removed myself, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, uh, well, if you miss me, you got me myself. It's um, I'm gonna be in and out, so, uh. That'd be good, yeah, I know, I'm gonna loop you to DPW.
Any comments on the minutes?
You got some comments on minutes, Bill?
It's along the exit lane.
Where was this, Bill, I'm sorry?
Line four. parallel parking spaces along the exit lanes have been eliminated.
Line four, parallel parking spaces along the exit lanes have been eliminated, not entering lane.
Got it.
Then the next line, it references four post parking spaces. One handy cap, accessible space and I think it's five spaces, including one handy cap.
Okay. Current cycle is five. Proposed.
On page three. There's a four O vote. Probably indicate who did not participate in the vote.
Yeah, and and I should have caught that, yeah, cuz we just talked about that with something else.
Maybe the last bullet on the conditions. Might not be known delivers.
No delivers. Oh, wait, where was the four O vote? I I have, we have four O vote.
Five members in the current meeting, so we should note who did not participate.
Oh, 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 okay. That was Chris, you didn't because it had already started, right, the hearing?
Yeah, it's the same as the one below. Two different things.
Got it. I gave us a timeline too, by the way, I think I gave it to you.
Bill, you don't have to stare into the recording, just so you know.
You have to what?
Yeah, it's a little intimidating.
I wanna know what you mean business when we talk about minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes we talked about tonight, the minutes for November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor to approve the minutes, please raise your hand. Five zero. Bill, planner update?
Um, lock. I gave you the um, you gotta speak directly into the uh. We gave the. Um, okay, let's start with the A D U real quick. Um, I got the um, yeah, the A D U. Uh, we have to strike out, you know, whatever the 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 uh. Passages were that the the um A G said.
Well, what did they say? They said everything?
You know, I'll send it, I thought, did I send it to you guys?
No.
Oh, I just got it, okay, yeah, I'll send it to you. Um, and then so I figured, I that was on my list to do today, um. I talked to council about it and they said, well, what we can do, we can adopt it with the stricken passages removed. And then we can do a new one, if we wanna, you know, we do a period, if we wanna change it, so my suggestion would be, I'll send it to you. Thought I did, I guess that was, I'm in my son, I'll find. Um, I just got back from recent, she's got it and and her um. We saw our attorney.
Did they get rid of our affordability?
No, that's something got rid of.
I'm just showing you some now, that's all. I hope they kept the affordability. Don't know what that means.
Yeah, if the state law allows unlimited A D U.
Yeah.
Required an owner to live in one.
I'll look forward to Steve, but there's there's three key pieces relating to this. Um, I got the. The Attorney General's um. Comments, which they removed. The way they worded that, um, and I I I'm sorry, I slapped the sentence to you today, go to the. Their comments were a couple of things with the building commissioner, which was interesting, cuz it was, it was not.
Some pro building commissioner or?
Uh, no, they said that uh the initial section, here's the disapproved text. Um, they say that it it the reason for this is they feel that. The state building code uh supersedes. Uh, it conflicts our limits on occupancy. Uh, conflicts with the state building code. And um, so they wanted to kind of rehash some of this stuff. Um, and strike out the passages, so they want to figure out, we wanna go to have, go back in there. Um, but i- in a nutshell, it says that uh section eight point five. Uh, eight point one point five two states the initial occupancy permit for an A D U will remain in effect for two years. And maybe renewed every two years, as long as the A D U applies to section eight one. Section eight one five states that the occupancy permit will expire if the permit is so if the property is sold. And the occupancy permit is not renewed within ninety days of the sale. We disapprove section eight point one point five two and three. Shown bold and underlined in section one because the issuance and revocation of an occupancy permit is governed by the building code. Therefore, a town's bylaws uh provisions are preempted, it's explained below, and it goes on. With that, so that's.
That's kind of existing, okay.
Yeah, that's a. The comments, okay. Um. Uh, section eight point one point three on our size limitations. States that the A D U shall be no larger than the the smaller of six hundred square feet or fifty percent. Of the floor area of the principal dwelling unit. Once amendments to G L forty A, one A and three take full effect on February second, twenty twenty five. The town will be required to permit A D U's that exceed this size, namely those that are not larger than gross. Floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So as long as they would meet other reasonable local requirements. Uh, in light of this, the town should monitor guidance regulations on the subjects promulgated as E O H L C and discuss with town council. On the actions needed to comply with the new law. So we 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 have to change that.
That's it.
Um, no. But, there's only, not too many. I thought, um. Owner occupancy, we talked about, um, the town must ensure that it uh. We must have said, I can't remember how, it doesn't say where we worded it, but it says our section eight point three point five requires the owner of the property to occupy one of the dwelling units. Can't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, um. Oh, off-street parking.
Yeah.
Uh, require off-street parking provided in amounts in compliance. Uh, with zoning bylaws for residents of both units, is such a fashion to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, general laws will limit parking requirements that may be. The new law that will limit the parking requirements uh as follows. Not more than one additional parking space shall be required for a accessory dwelling unit, and provided further. That no additional parking space shall be required for a necessary dwelling. Not more than one half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station.
Okay.
So that's, those are pretty easy.
That's fine.
You gotta maximum one, okay?
Yeah, so it says somebody has to be proven delete cuz they conflict with the building code. We approve the article, however, is discussed here, and the town should be mindful of recent changes. And consult with town council and measure that we need to take to comply with the new state law once it takes full effect.
What's the procedure to? Acknowledge the changes.
Town meeting, just gotta go back.
Oh, Jesus.
Really?
That's what, that's what, that's what.
So, part of it is in a sec now, and the rest has to go back to town meeting?
Well, we're striking the passages that they've said to strike. Um, and they say we can keep it, okay, so like, we're gonna get rid of the building inspector shop, right? Um. We could do our, we adopted it whatever our numbers were for the the square footage and the owner occupancy and so on. We keep that there, but after after February second. It's gonna be superseded by the state, so they're saying might as well just make it consistent with your. With the state law.
Yeah, we can't do that to them.
Well, we came first, they should make it consistent with us. We went first, they should make it consistent with us.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I thought, is there some, something in effect today? Is the old family dwelling everything gone and the new A D U?
Our stuff is.
In place today?
Yes.
Yes, until February, right?
That's right, everything except the parts that were stricken by the A G, which were about the building inspector.
And then there was some cockings on, you can keep this, but after February, it's.
It's moot, right?
So.
Exactly.
What do we do? We planned for.
Okay.
Spring town meeting and just bring up the article, striking out everything that we need to strike out, I do not wanna rehash this in town meeting again.
No, no, we don't, we don't, we don't have to strike anything out.
A lot of things that are being stripped.
Yeah, we.
We have to change six hundred and nine hundred.
We have to change six hundred and nine hundred and um.
Parking spaces to maximum one.
Back parking spaces.
I want this to be Chris saying, we are literally just updating this to what is required by the new state.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm gonna say.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the state law interpretation that the state law allows multiple A D U's, by right?
They didn't say anything about that.
They're not gonna say.
Because we didn't have any zoning on that, so they didn't need to comment on it. That's just gonna be a state rule.
Yeah, but we've been wondering about that.
Actually, actually, you know what?
All those workshops we've gone to about A D U's, they keep saying, oh, we'll figure it out.
I think I was actually sent to you in the morning.
Hours?
Yeah.
Well, they didn't catch it this.
They didn't strike it.
But that's why, go soon.
What was this?
Did ours say that we can only have one A D U?
I'm pretty sure it probably did.
I don't remember.
Oh, wait a minute. It might have.
And if they didn't strike it, then I guess it's fine.
Otherwise, I'm building six. No.
No.
Now.
No, I don't, no.
On February first, you do.
February second, I'm in Florida, in an absentee landless.
But on February first, you can't build more than one, cuz that was in the fact, so you're in a bind. You're gonna live in one, and then you've gotta build five more on the second, and then.
We do.
Yeah.
We did say.
It's complicated.
There sure, there shall be no more than one accessory.
And they didn't say who about it?
No.
Well, I agree.
Good, all right.
Would they, what an initial comment was that you can't lend it to ones?
They weren't sure, right?
It's unclear, the state language is unclear.
It doesn't matter, cuz we put a condition in, yeah, but they didn't catch it, so it's it's gonna be in.
I mean.
So you don't get.
Right. I don't know, they say it's not, listen how it says, it says.
Right.
Oh, that's us.
It sounds almost like ours, so it is. They probably copied this.
Yeah, they definitely read ours.
I don't know, that's brilliant.
All right, this is fine, we're good. I think that's pretty decent, I mean, I'll use the article.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Bill, you're going to prepare a plan for that for town meeting?
Yeah, okay.
Do you wanna talk about the town meeting timeline? With your planning update, you passed out the thing?
I know, I just.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, where do they? You guys have it?
Yep.
No, I'll see.
I think it's over on the other table. Is anyone online?
Yeah, so. What's that?
You're having an override. You're writing a warrant for it.
So the, I guess the question, I've got a lot of little cleanups that Zoe's doing. But are we, is it realistic, or do you think we're gonna P M O D for them?
We would have to open up the hearing, of course, and go to motion to do all that.
Right, the state wants to participate in the hearing. They have to be notified cuz it affects parcel A.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, what are they gonna do?
Nothing, they just have to make sure we don't make it.
What? We're not touching A.
I would hardly modify it, yeah.
We're not.
Well, well, we're trying not to, but we're changing the language referencing A, but we're trying not to change anything, so they don't argue about it.
Sort of the preamble stuff before we get into the sub-districts, right? Okay, right, that I could intentionally.
Few other few other things, and like inclusionary, you know, we're not gonna go with a A inclusionary for anyone else, so.
So we would have to have hearings in January for that.
We'd wait.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very fourteen is the.
And then you can run hearings. Um, confirm.
We can, but we have to have, we have to have, we have to have a.
Should start.
We have to have placeholder draft warrant articles by four fourteen.
Yeah, it's easy enough. Cuz we can, we can have a review draft of the board on the, whatever our first January meeting is, maybe you have to.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that, yeah.
Man.
So that's, that would have to be the goal, first meeting in January, which would be. January fourteenth.
For what?
We would need, the board would need to be able to review the draft language.
Well, I've gotta send it, yeah, we could start that, but I gotta send it to to when I have the draft language, I have to send it to um. Select board.
Right, and then.
And I gotta.
And then from that.
When do, wait, no, you don't have to send it to the select board, but the trouble.
I have to say, it has to, remember, has to be referred back to a planning board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so then he would have to, in the second meeting in January, Bill would have to be able to.
I don't think that, I don't, I don't see how we could do that.
Okay.
The second meeting in January. I've got it, we have to advertise it, like, I have to advertise it, like. Jesus Christ, um.
Well, let's keep it moving, like, let's, let's.
Well, we have, we have to do that for the A D U stuff, I mean, that all the same timeline, right, everything has the same timeline, all the changes are the same timeline. So what's the timeline for that?
At the time, I mean, for the A D U is relatively minor, I think.
And your little changes, but what?
Little changes, yeah.
Yeah, but what's your, what's your schedule on the little changes?
I didn't get to it, I just finished it today.
Is that gonna be January fourteenth to January twenty eighth?
I don't know.
January zoning, regardless of whether inclusive P M O D here. But they all have to be. Discussed on the Jan fourteen and finalized on. Jan twenty eight, since then, sent to the select board, get back in time to get back to the select board by Feb fourteen?
January fourteen to their first meeting date, no.
It's February eleven, February month.
Oh, that works, well, I mean, plus it's a placeholder.
Another placeholder, I don't know, Bill, Bill Denzer's feeling. Feeling, but.
What?
But let's just keep, let's keep it moving, let's keep.
Let's see if Bill and I can finish. By January.
Yeah, we gotta finish everything, we gotta finish A D U, we gotta finish this, and we gotta finish all the little stuff by the fourteenth of January. My phone.
Okay.
And you're, you're gonna arm wrestle Bill for the blame juice section of the M O D.
Yeah.
That's the important part. Really else is pretty much there. Not that many changes from the original, we can see some.
Really? Can we talk about the, the next, that P M O D A, I'm sorry, just the next P M O D on January fourteen?
Yeah, you missed it last time.
I know. Oh.
Sure.
Yeah, is there more discussion?
Bill brought one down tonight.
There's an update of a a section based on my conversation last night.
It's this thing.
Inclusionary zoning.
Uh, yeah, I'm just a little, I'm just trying, I'm going over these dates in my head, trying to go Julia leaving and stuff, I don't. Uh, well, we'll figure out. Let's see, um.
Okay, you want to. So, so on the, on the inclusionary zoning, um. The current language is written solely for. Uh, section A, which is the M B T A zone, and basically says currently. The inclusionary zoning percentages of requirements will be as allowed by the state. And two things about, one is the state has finally decided what they're gonna allow, so we wanna. So we want to update that. And then the second thing is for other areas in the PMOD, we don't want to be. That restrictive because the state is, it doesn't, doesn't allow as many as we might otherwise want. So we have to have a standalone section for the other. Sub, sub districts and that section. Is a standalone, but it's also, we have something in there that is trying to incentivize. People to provide. Lower income units at sixty percent AMI. So the current version of incentive is if you're required to provide two at eighty percent AMI. You could instead require one at six, sixty percent. And there was a concern last time that. That's good, but we never want to have fewer than ten percent of the total units.
We don't want.
Be affordable some way or another.
We don't want affordable unit to be five percent of the number of units.
Right.
Through, through most of it.
Yeah, so it would, so the things were adjusted, so effe- eventually, you know, that trade off between sixty percent and eighty percent can only happen at twenty or more units.
Which I don't love. Because I feel like the areas we're referencing, I don't know that there's gonna be a ton of, I mean, there might be twenty unit.
Yeah, I can see it happening at the, at what is currently the, uh, sub storage parcel. But I don't see twenty units happening along the rivers. But, you know.
I, I just, I do feel. I really like the idea of. More quality, high, like, uh, more affordable, you know, sixty percent AMI. The huge step in the right direction, even at the cost of having a fewer units. I think it's worth it.
Could we incentivize them another way, like?
Yeah, for less, for less than twenty.
Smaller, smaller square footage sizes or, you know, instead of like. Like the unit could be smaller. The developed, the, the. Less space.
Oh, well, I don't think they're really gonna need that. On these sites. If, you know, you give them smaller, they're just gonna end up with twenty units and then they could. It would come in, but there might be something to setbacks or. Isn't, or lock coverage or something.
Could you give them five extra feet if they, uh, you know. Are willing to do ten percent of units.
Or public access to the river, you know, isn't your.
For the twenty one or more units. At twenty five percent, isn't that a huge jump? From two units to five units?
Why, yes, it is. Although not really. Because. You know, when we had twelve units before. We were requiring, you know, one point two.
Right.
And when we had, you know, seventeen units before, we were presenting like one, one. Um. And, you know, so. The jump is really in the, you know, in nineteen, twenty units. We have a jump in the current regulations now. On the upper teens. And we're basically keeping that journey. But I, I see the twenty five percent as actually the, the biggest incentive for them to do the sixty percent trade. They're, they're coming in like, you know, the stuff downtown, thirty, forty, fifty units or even two hundred units.
They do, but you have to have twelve and a half percent.
Right.
Of your number of units.
Yeah.
Not be market rate. It's pretty.
That'd be big, yeah, so.
Twelve and a half per- percent still sits above our ten percent. The goal.
It does. Uh, the, in the DOD, we. Um, it would require. Some number of the, of affordable units to be sixty percent, correct? Right? Isn't it like? If they have. Eight affordable units, then I think what, two of them have to be sixty percent or something like that?
Quarter of or something, yeah, if, if they take bonus tents.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right. Why don't we do something like that?
Um.
I'm not saying we should, but I'm saying like.
Well.
We don't carry the same.
Yeah, we could, yeah. We, we haven't figured out whether that's.
We don't have.
Really gonna happen on the river.
Yeah, we don't have a density bonus set up.
Cause the river is not supposed to be. You know, big units. It's supposed to be neighborhood, brown floor. Modest amount of residential above. It's not supposed to be, you know, what we've been getting in town, you're just dropping twenty five hundred in a few years. It's not supposed to be that.
Who, who, who would be? We, that this ten percent bottom floor number, maybe we raise that to fifteen percent?
Ten percent.
So the horse trading can get you down to, to no fewer than ten percent of the project size? I mean, I kind of wanna, I want projects to be more than ten percent always if possible. Right? Cause that helps us, that helps us with housing production, affordable goals to get ten percent.
Well.
Right? But if every project, if a project comes in at ten percent, it doesn't. Help us as much as coming in at fif- fifteen percent.
Yeah, I would. Be okay with that, but I would count that. We don't actually need to give help that way anymore. We've got.
Cause we're at ten percent.
We're at ten percent. I mean, you know, our next product's gonna get over ten percent or four or five ways.
Still as long as we.
As long as we don't, you know, step back.
That's true. I've been acting in a deficit.
Yeah, we're no longer.
We're not in a deficit, so do we need to?
We don't have to pronounce our game.
Well, I don't, I think that that's a good, I think it's good to move forward, you know, still trying to get as much as we can, but again.
We could get into a deficit, couldn't we? Like if.
Very good. They did a bunch of, if, what if they did a bunch of building stuff that wasn't subject to our inclusionary?
Right.
I mean, I don't think it's likely, but, but theoretically, what if they created a whole new? Right. You know, single family neighborhood of, of. Five units. Those little groups of five units, they would be.
Right.
Not single family, could be anything.
Yeah, I mean, the real danger would be another. Continuance for. You and care, whatever, get down, like, your best of their. Which was the early thing that didn't have even ten percent of four, like, didn't have any.
Were they subject to it? Did they count against our cap?
Yeah, they count as dwelling units.
Then, I didn't know that. I, I, I forgot it maybe, I guess. Really?
Yeah. But that's okay. I mean, I, I don't see a lot of danger, plus, you know, we got the line area, I mean, fifteen percent.
I mean, that'll get them horse trading from twenty five percent to fifteen percent.
Yeah, I mean, that would run in, yeah, and then that's fine. We'll still end up with a. A weird little, um. Yeah, fifteen percent, so that means.
That's gonna change your table.
I mean, you, you can't do it unless it's thirty or more. If you're gonna do them all, I, I guess twenty eight, maybe one or something.
I don't understand. Cause you need enough, you need enough math, enough numbers to do the horse trading now.
Now, one thing that could make a tall question, so. But, but then it considers, you might want to offer a limit of, of a trade.
Yes.
If somebody really came in with. What they're proposing down on the cutting lane, you know, dropping in three hundred units.
That would maybe have been a comment.
And I mean, do you really want them to trade seventy five down to thirty seven?
No, we want to cap it at like ten or something to avoid. Um, I don't know what the consequences are, dropping in. Thirty, sixty percent AMI, that'd be great. I just don't know.
I think it'd be super.
Great.
So then why cap it then?
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Look at our housing production plan.
Yeah, actually, it's the only, it's the only way we could ever actually achieve. Units that can be afforded versus state defined. Yeah, we're losing all those units now with all redevelopment and knocking down the old housing. People are renting this inner box and turning them into eighteen hundred.
I'm not requesting any changes. I think it's fine.
Yeah, um, yeah, so the four laws. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one. One possible change to the, the section A. Um, language. Everything is exactly right, except I realize. With the current language of fracturing units should be rounded down. That, you know.
You could have zero.
Maybe you could have a zero. Couldn't you get a zero, ten percent, one six? I guess maybe we don't need that. A little worried that they could go to zero.
But is there any arm by including it besides the state left review?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm hesitant to put any textual changes in the state approved paragraphs. And this is, this has changed a little bit, basically. You're an engineer department.
Do the math.
Alright, I'll take that, I'll take that. Oh, I know why, I know why I had that in there. Because the, the current inclusionary allows you to. Buy out fractional units.
Well.
So, if you're required to have point six units, you can either give point six worth of money or build one unit. And so I'm not sure what we would prefer.
You want to cost the town an extra five thousand dollars in legal fees just to work with the state and let's do it?
Or we just leave it up.
Okay.
Hi. Do you think they'd like it? Cause like, oh yeah, at least once.
I just, yeah, I don't, I don't pretend to know how they think.
No, it ain't actually not, it's because of the fractional buy up that we allow there.
That's not gonna be a big deal, though.
Likely that happening seems.
Yeah.
And.
I didn't do the math.
And if it does happen, like, there's, there's no, there's nothing, it's not like.
Yes, cause it's very, it's a very, very minor item. Yeah. Well, I probably.
They're not spending five thousand dollars on the legal cons- consult piece.
They have to understand it. And state would change all the rules.
Any other comments?
No.
I didn't do any PMOD anymore, sorry.
Okay, Bill, we got anything else for us?
I think that's it, the, um.
Good, that's enough.
The, the, I mean, the, um. Alternates. The alternate, we still need an alternate, so.
Well, yeah.
No applications?
Uh, I haven't gotten any. They may have come to Greg in the last, cause I was out last week, unexpected, and so check. Um.
Oh, I thought I heard that this.
Okay, we're good.
Trying to get rid of me, we'll make a motion to close the meeting.
One second.
All favor to close, please, again. Five zero to change.
Okay.